Hello.
Hello, Meg.
I'm probably in the right spot.
How do you see her?
Anybody need a different computer?
It's an accountant. He seems to know a lot about milligrams and it seems like he usually takes stuff.
Oh, Ken. Yeah.
Hot mic.
Um, yeah, but I'm in like a.
Hot mics.
I was praying and doing like a. Um, care. So there was a bunch of stuff that we didn't finish.
Dim these lights.
Spud chairs.
Lights. These lights are really, really bright today.
The next like four days. Wow.
Is that up at Sean? Is that upstairs?
One item Sean, one item Sean. Can you dim the light?
One item Sean, one item Sean. See the man on the stage.
There he is.
Dono, can you uh dim these lights just a little bit? They're really, really bright. As bright as they've ever been.
Think I've entered the stars.
Same as it ever was. Same as it ever was. Pink longer tube. He just went up.
Worse. It's definitely worse. Thanks, Sean.
Now my retinas have burnt out.
Good thing I have sunscreen.
Much better.
Thanks.
Thank you. Can you still see us?
Can you see me now?
Is it the mood lighting, Sean?
I did a bunch of stuff last night.
Well, you're on stage.
Stuff when I get home, stuff tomorrow. Well.
Give me a thumbs up if you're ready. Welcome, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. Uh first order of business, if you stand if you're able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything they wish to talk about not on tonight's agenda? And seeing no one, I will turn it over to Mr. Lynch for student showcase tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. Uh we have a very special group that's assembled here tonight. Uh I'd like to introduce Ryan Sylvia, our athletic director. Ryan Sylvia, our athletic director. I'm introducing you, Ryan Sylvia, athletic director. I know. Conversation with Brian can be enthralling. I get it. And he has a, he has a special group of people with him this evening uh who deserve a great deal of spotlight and recognition uh for what they've achieved, uh especially on today is the anniversary of the Title IX law in the country. And um it's nice that we have continued the tradition of a very strong female sports here in Middleborough. So Ryan, take it away, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch and the school committee members. Uh thanks for having us here tonight. Uh I also asked our head coach, Dan Sylvia, to sit next to me and give a quick uh as we present. Kind of a historic uh team.
Sorry about that. Um we have a historic team here and and very fitting, like you said, Title IX. Uh this is the first uh Middleborough High School team, uh girls team to reach the state final, uh the final game uh in the state tournament. Um so we were really excited about that. This team also has had a um and they're all standing behind me here so a little awkwardly, but not, not all of them are here, but um this team has had a ton of success from the get-go since they got here. There's um it's made up of primarily juniors, so most of the teams coming back. We have one senior, Lexi Boldry, who's graduating this year, the catcher. Um they've been uh league champions for four straight seasons. Um so this group mostly three straight seasons, but um Lexi for four. And uh they had a uh awesome run through the playoffs. We hosted two playoff games with Montechuset Tech here first, followed by Fairhaven High School, which and once we get to the tournament, it's really, every game is exciting. Uh the, the win over Fairhaven was a two-one win. Uh we went up to Hudson High School, who was a higher seeded team and uh you know, we're, we're up, I think, twelve-one or eleven-one. Uh we ended up winning thirteen to twelve. They had a, a rally and a comeback and the girls kind of persevered through that. Uh that was up at Hudson and then we had a semifinal game at um up in Lowell at Martin Field versus Saint Mary's of Lynn. Um and they, they pretty much handled that team. They were the number one seed and 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 handled that team well. Um and then faced New Bedford Voke in the final up at UMass Amhorse, Amherst at Sortino Softball Complex. Um and it was a close game. They ended up losing the game eight-five, uh but battled back from a, a early deficit. Um and it was a, it was a game I said at awards night last night. I don't know if anybody saw that, that uh we played New Bedford Voke three times this year. We actually played them twice in the regular season. And the first time, we lost to them by one uh at New Bedford Voke and then we beat them back here at home, uh beat them by five and then lost to them by three in the, in the state finals. So I told the girls, if you do math, we actually scored one more run than they did over the three games. Unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't work like that, so. Um they all received state finalists medals, um which most of them are wearing tonight. And uh we're just really proud of this team. Didn't end the way we uh we hoped, but um we're really proud of, of everything they did this year uh to reach the state final, so.
Mr. Sylvia, at one point, there was a particular moment in the game when we were sort of be on the third base side on the ground there and the the UMass coach was standing there and a particular hit was, was, was made to uh to right field. Can you talk about that just a bit, a little bit?
Sure. I actually commented on that last night too, because there was a, a nice highlight that the uh, the TV production class did for, uh for the awards night and uh in the highlight, it was, it was Alex Welch. We had two runners on and we were down five-nothing. Um and, and she provided a spark with a three-run homerun uh that was described by the announcer as a moonshot. And um and when I was standing, I was standing next to one of the UMass staff members and he turned to me and he saw me wearing the Middleborough stuff and he said, um I go to, I've been to every UMass softball game at Sortino Complex and that's, I haven't even seen a college student hit the ball that far. I mean, the ball went out of the stadium. There was a, a fence and then about ten yards of, of green space, ten, twenty yards of green space, and then another taller fence.
Another fence to protect the parking lot.
And then the parking lot, and that ball landed in the parking lot, so.
I think it went to the Middleborough bus.
Yeah. So that was a mem- memorable hit for sure.
Any questions from the school committee?
Any questions? Well, congratulations, ladies. We, we really appreciate everything you did and coach you too. It's very exciting for us, especially as Ryan said, that we can honor especially women's athletics uh and bring them up here. And you do us proud by being the first team to go to the state final, so thank you very much for that. And uh I know the whole town was excited, um and a lot of them are watching on a wide variety of pieces, be it parents doing it on Facebook or um the, uh what's the service that we use, Ryan?
Uh we were just streaming through uh on um NFHS Network and also through YouTube if we, if that wasn't available.
So I don't know if the coach, I know the coach is kind of a quiet guy, except when he's at practice, so. And if you have a few things to say at all, or if you'd like to say something, if not, that, that's fine too.
Sure, absolutely. Uh first, first and foremost, uh to the ladies behind me and the ones that aren't here tonight, I, I, I can't speak, you know, in, in words what they actually accomplished this year too. And, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think it, we're in year one hundred and forty-nine of Middleborough High School, if I'm not mistaken. So the first female team to actually make it this far in a hundred and forty-nine years is unbelievable. Um hopefully in one fifty, we'll bring it all. There's no doubt about it. We got a great returning group. I'm looking forward to it. Uh one of the hottest working groups that I've ever worked with before. I've been coaching at the varsity level for sixteen years. We've had success no matter where I've been and obviously here is more important. And I look forward to the challenges that are in front of us. I'm sure they'll step up to them as well. There's no doubt, like I said, they're a hard-working team, six days a week, three hours a day in practice. I think our practices should be tougher than our games. And there's no doubt, we're gonna learn a lot from the last game that we played and hopefully we'll do a little better next time.
Well, on behalf of the entire Middleborough Public School System, we thank you and we honor you girls. You, you did a great job. You made everybody proud. You're role models now, so. They're looking up to you from the lower and you know, there's a good, strong Middleborough U softball program and they're all looking up, so keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Lynch, also, I, I know there was a couple of students here. I think they missed public comment and from the uh, from the track team. I don't know if you guys wanted to come down.
We were gonna let them, uh Nate was gonna bring that up during his time.
During his time, okay. Just, just double check.
Thank you, Brian.
I appreciate that.
Ladies, did any of you want to say anything? You're more than welcome to.
Hi, I'm Alex. I played on the Middleborough High School varsity team. And I have to say that my favorite part of the season was honestly our last game. Um unfortunately, we did lose, but I feel like as a team, I feel like we were collectively really working well with each other. We really hyped each other up. We were all there for each other. And again, in the loss, we were still really there for each other. We all supported each other before and after. And I feel like it was one really strong game that we had and hopefully next year we can bring it all together and do the same thing.
That's teamwork. Good job.
Could I, actually, while, while you're at the mic, could I ask a, a question?
Yeah.
It's kind of a, it's a multi-part, but uh I just wondered if you could give me a couple of highlights. Um I just wanna know, with the last game excluded, what was the most pivotal moment you think that got you guys here? Sometimes that happens, you know, not in playoff scenarios. And then uh what was the funniest moment you can talk about um from your team?
Um okay, so I think honestly, um coming off of last year's season, we won a lot of our games. The only game we actually lost was the final game. And so I feel like this year, we came into this really thinking we were gonna win everything. We were gonna do fine. Um we did have a couple of losses in the beginning, so I feel like that really brought us together. It put us in like a spot where we could recognize where we stood as a team. So it really, I think that was our pivotal point for this season. And then honestly, the funniest times this year was probably at practice. You know, we gave each other nicknames and we did all these things together, so um actually, one of the girls is named Beans on our team, so. So I feel like practice was honestly the funnest part and probably the funniest part.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And actually, Mr. Chair, I, I understand that um standing before us is someone who won the um, the Patriot Ledger um s- uh softball player of the week. Is that right? Um Mel Reese, right?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I don't want to take too much more time, but just, I wanted to give a, a quick shout out um to the Middleborough All Sports Boosters Association, who uh stepped up huge for this tournament run uh in a couple of ways. Uh for the, the semifinal, which was up in Lowell and we had to work through Boston traffic or around Boston traffic, and also the final uh out in um, out in Amherst. They, they pitched in to cover the gap in cost, so we could put the girls on a comfortable bus that had a bathroom and a, and uh air conditioning, uh so that they were comfortable getting up to those final games. Uh and then also, they answered a championship breakfast uh the day before the game, uh just to kind of celebrate the girls and make sure they had a a, a nice meal before, before the big game. So thank you to Ma- uh the Masba for, for doing that as well.
Thank you.
Great sport. All set?
All set, my friend.
Thank you very much, ladies for coming, and congratulations. And we'll see you next year.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks to those parents in the audience who supported these young ladies through the years. I know the feeling.
Uh next item on our agenda is report from school committee members. Does any school committee member have anything they wish to speak about at this time? Then I will turn it over to our student rep. Nathan, Nathan, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um before I started, I wanted to invite Charles Montross and Isabel Wheeler up, so they can talk about um their regards about our trip to Nationals.
Uh hello, as you said.
Welcome.
I'm Charles Montross. Um myself, Isabel Wheeler, Nate Donahue, and Michael Knightlick were fortunate enough to get to go to Eugene, Oregon to compete at the national level for track and field. Um we had six qualifiers. Four of us were fortunate enough to go. And thanks to the generous donations of the Middleborough community, it made um going a lot more financially eas- easy. So we wanna thank everyone in the community who was willing to donate to us, but we'd like to especially thank Ms. Ryder for starting the Venmo fundraiser and for um Ms. Brunel at the Burtwood School, who donated the proceeds from her smoker raffle to us, as well as Mr. and Mrs. Morgan, who donated that um smoker to be raffled off.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Rich, go ahead.
I wonder if you could just give us some highlights of the experience and um, you know, what you look forward to for next year, maybe getting back there?
Um some highlights were definitely being able to watch the best people in the country that you can compete with throw and jump and run. It was really incredible. Um I saw some things I didn't think a eighteen-year-old kid could do. I saw some things that I didn't think fourteen-year-old people were able to do, and they beat out almost everyone in the entire country.
Wow.
And it was incredibly impressive. Like we watched the fastest seventh grader in history run and she would beat pretty much most people, including the boys. It was very scary to see someone move that fast.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Nate, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh again, I just wanted to openly say to the entire public and thank you for every single person that donated money to the Venmo ref, for the raffle and for the Venmo um that Ms. Ryder put together. Just openly say thank you, because it made everything so much easier and a lot more, it was a lot less stress on us and it made it so much better for us to enjoy.
Awesome.
Well, we thank you all for representing us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I'll let you continue, Nate.
Okay, so um starting off at the MEK, um they had the face paint, they had face painting and a special treat at lunch on Tuesday. Um the kindergarteners um visited the first grade classrooms and it was their parade to first grade, uh which was today. And then ev- everyone is super excited about the summer, but said it was sad to see everybody moving on from the MEK. So from the MKG, um they would like to thank everyone for the amazing year of teaching and learning. Um they wanna wish the fifth grade five students all the best at Nichols Middle School. Study hard, stay focused, and make good choices. And I hope that everyone has a safe and relaxing summer break. And reminder that there's a summer reading program at the Middleborough Public Library and they're looking forward for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year with lots of learning activities that we are currently planning. Then from the Nichols Middle School, uh Nichols Middle School had a successful week last week celebrating their eighth graders. They held the eighth grade awards and promotion ceremony for each team last week and also had the eighth grade dance. And the students were amazing and had a lot of fun. And this week, the sixth and the eighth graders had their field day on Wednesday and last week, the seventh graders attended Camp Eumecus for their field day. Last week, Mr. Redpath, an eighth grade science teacher, held their rocket day, where students created rockets and got to test them out. And Middle Schools, Nichols Middle School would like to congratulate Mr. Tom Brandon, school counselor, and Ms. Sally Weaver, seventh grade ELA teacher, on a very happy retirement. We thank you for their many years of service to our students and the Middleborough Public Schools. And just a reminder to all families that the student Chromebooks are to be returned in along with any payments for damages and missing cords. The last day of school is Friday, June twenty-fourth, and it is an early release day. And now for the MHS, big congratulations to the softball team, who made history this week and took their well-earned spot in the state championship game on Saturday at UMass Amherst, and everyone is so proud of them. Congratulations to Michael Knightlick, Nathan Donahue, Charles Montross, and Isabel Wheeler, who represented the school at the national championships in Oregon the past weekend. Um congratulations to all the new class officers for the class of twenty-twenty-four and class of twenty-twenty-five. And then a co- big congratulations to all the television production students who participated in the New England Student Production Awards. I believe we had two winners. And then a job well done to the GSA for a great celebration of pride at MHS on last Wednesday. And then Mass Insight is offering an amazing opportunity for students engaging in AP courses next year. The AP Summer Bridge Program is a free opportunity for all MHS students. And then the last day of school is tomorrow. The school day will end with an eleven-thirty AM dismissal. And finally, quarter fours and slash semester two report cards will be available through Aspen on Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at two PM.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions from Nate? Thank you, Nathan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just a note, Mr. Chair, that early dismissal happens at a different time for each school, just so that, that, that we're not dismissing everyone at eleven-thirty, just if somebody's just tuning in.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be tough.
We don't have that many buses.
Uh there was a slight misprint on tonight's agenda. The MEA president, co-presidents meet with us the first meeting of the month. Um so with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. Uh I, on my first in line here is the COVID nineteen update and I'm happy to report um that the town numbers are down, that last week on the, on the dashboard on Friday, we had eighteen, uh and as of today, we're down to two. It was one yesterday. It went up slightly. Uh the two happened to be at MHS. The rest of the schools are clear at this point. And um we'll see, hopefully that will go down as those students clear and maybe the next meeting, it'll be zero in the next superintendent's COVID report. So uh if there are any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them. Community trends are down and certainly school trends are way down and hopefully be gone soon. On next on my agenda is the Middleborough High School proposed new schedule. We have a number of members of that committee who've been working very, very hard um to put a proposed schedule together. And Mr. Paul Branigan is going to come up along with Mr. Justin Pittsley and probably recognize the members of the committee who are sitting here from the high school and uh talk about the process and talk about where they stand and the vetting process of which has been going on for some time. It's been a labor of love, right, Mr. Branigan?
Sure. No, it has been. I thank you for allowing us to come tonight to share with you our work. We had promised you back in the fall that we would um come before you before the end of the school year with a proposal for a new schedule for the high school. I think it's important to just take a minute and introduce the committee, uh who has been working really tirelessly on this process since last fall. Um Tony Cupy, who is here tonight, who is our innovation lab coordinator. Alan Harris, who is a member of our science department. Jessica Buco represents our English department. Sam DeSharnis from special education, as well as our um representation of the MEA on the committee. Steve Chamberlain, the math department chair, um who has been instrumental in the process as well. Justin Pittsley, who will share some elements of the, of the proposal tonight. And then, of course, Ryan Sylvia and Josh Porter, who were both um able to give input from an administrative lens as well. Um I think it's important to um just give a little bit of this context of how we'd like to do this tonight. Um it is an incredibly meaty um PowerPoint that you have. And so what we'd like to be able to do is share with you really structural pieces of this that we're hoping for your approval. There's a lot of nuances within the structure that we have to work at. So today's was really about bringing to you, this is what the bell schedule would look like. And then it really, over the next year, really starting our punch list of really working within that structure. So um the reason why that we came before you a year ago to say that we would not be launching a new schedule until the fall of twenty-twenty-three is to make sure that if you approve the structure and this proposal, that it will allow for us to be able to take the upcoming school year to ensure the fact that we have all of the pieces in place with the hope that we would be coming back to you throughout the school year with some updates on different elements of our schedule. So there may be slides that if there is a particular question that we can stop and clarify or answer a question, but we really wanna make sure that you can see the structural pieces of what our schedule will look like. Um because that is what we're hoping that you will support tonight. Um for the community, I, we really think it's important that you know a little bit about really where we are, why we're here. So um in nineteen ninety-seven, Middleborough High School launched the block schedule. And it was based upon um a odd day, even day, or black day, orange day approach, where all of our students were engaged in eight classes. We went from a seven-period traditional schedule, which is what I taught in my very first year in the district. And then we really evolved into this brand-new, cutting-edge schedule. Um and that schedule has been with us for twenty-five years. Um in two thousand and seven, we made a modification with a new leader in the building to instead of going from this alternating day where students had courses all year long to what we're currently under now, where it was a four-by-four schedule that it's semesterized, where the students were only carrying the four courses plus i- in a course of a semester. In two thousand and twelve, we modified it again with um really creating some equity within our advanced placement program that was growing um in terms of what we were offering. So to be able to ensure the fact that all of our programs could have um some real kind of equity to them, we went to this seven-and-a-half credit model, the hundred and thirty-five days, where you had students in AP every day for the first semester and then they would go every other day in the spring semester. So with all of these kind of changes, that there's always been these committees that we've created at the high school to say, is this really what we should be doing? Is this what we want it to be? And we would always get ourselves into a position where we could never move any further in our schedule. We would always hit a roadblock. And I know people like Mr. Harris and Mr. Pittsley and others had been on numerous scheduling committees that we've had. In two thousand and nineteen, we were given the charge of creating a new schedule and we began that work. And then, as you know, that in twenty-twenty, um you know, the world kind of entered a whole new realm with COVID. And so in the fall of twenty-one, we picked up where we had left off, mobilized a team of people that really were passionate about this process and interested in it. And um really some unbelievable collaboration that took place, some give and take, to really bring you what you're gonna see tonight, which is really a we feel, an incredibly modern, um personalized um schedule for all students, as well as elements that are so desperately needed within the structure of the faculty and staff. And we're really excited to share it with you tonight.
Paul, if I could add.
Please.
In two thousand and nineteen, this became a contractual matter uh as part of the contract, just, just so members of the committee know that. Thank you.
Yes.
For Paul's context, nineteen ninety-seven was my freshman year as a student, so we've been in the block schedule for twenty-five years. So we're looking at, at something new, which we're excited to share with you tonight. So as we went through our process, we, it was a very extensive process. We've been meeting since early in the fall and we've met with all of our stakeholders, with the faculty, uh with students, with the community, um with district administration and our administrative team here in the building. And we really wanted to make sure that anything that we were doing was based on something that needed to be done and was based on um things that were best for our students and for our staff and not just doing something just to do it. So we really wanted to make sure that we identified what the priorities would be in ma- in building a potential new schedule. And so we identified a number of priorities. I'll I'll just share a couple of them with you. Number one was we wanted to maintain everything we offer now. We didn't want to cut away any of our programming. And so we didn't want to go to a schedule that would eliminate the ability for students to take the various pathways that we offer, the elective programming that we have, and there are a lot of schedule models out there that would do just that. So we wanted to make sure that we preserved those opportunities, and that would include things like fire science, our internship program, our partnership with Massa Sawyer and dual enrollment. And so that was definitely a priority that we looked at. We also, especially through the faculty and our students, wanted to identify a way to meet with our students more times throughout a school year. So right now, in our semesterized model, most students have a course for 90 days and with an 84-minute block each time they meet. And so that semesterized issue causes us some issues in terms of continuity in the schedule. So you might have Spanish I first semester in the fall freshman year, you might not have Spanish II until second semester sophomore year, and that's a continuity gap that we have. We also have issues with keeping momentum throughout the school year, and so we wanted to try to find a way to have more class meetings with our students and to reduce the amount of time that we meet with them in general. Eighty-four minutes is a long haul for a lot of classes, and the needs of students have changed over time. And as we've observed with the pandemic and the amount of time that they had, in a way, the attention spans just are not the same. And so that was something that we identified and we're looking at to see if there was a way to make that work. We're also looking for some opportunities for student voice in their schedule. Right now, students are in their classes, and that's it. There is, other than lunch and passing time, there's no opportunity for students to have time in their day where they have a voice in what they're going to be doing. And so some of the things we'll share with you tonight, give students some of that time. It's very focused, very directed and structured time, but it will allow them some of that opportunity to have a voice in their own education beyond just being in class. And so we're excited to share that with you.
Justin and I will come back and forth a little bit, that one of the structures, we were talking about this personalization time, that we were really following some trends that you were finding nationally across the country of really high schools that were really building in structure into their school day to really allow students to be able to own their learning and their time, which for us here at the high school was really attractive, because as Justin had shared, that our students are engaged all day long in a class, which is really what you want. But at the same token, it really doesn't provide them an opportunity to create autonomy for themselves as a learner. And so when we were looking at some of these trends that you were seeing nationally in programs and other schedules, that it really became something that was an attraction to us, and I think you're going to see, not think you will, see elements of really where we wanted to incorporate this into the future for our students to really become really independent in their own learning during a school day, which oftentimes is not something that's afforded to students many times in the course of their day.
So after we identified a number of these priorities, we also had to look at what are our limitations in a schedule? What are the restricting factors? You can't just move, a high school schedule is very complicated. It's very much different than some of the other grade levels, where we just have so many moving parts, they don't stay with the same students all day, and it's a huge jigsaw puzzle. And so we had to identify some of those limitations. Some of those limitations include student enrollment. Right now, we must have at least four lunches to allow all of our students to have lunch, and that's a limiting factor, because our class periods have to incorporate the ability to have at least four lunches. And based on enrollment, wherever that tracks going forward, there's a potential to even have to move to five. And so we needed to make sure that any schedule that we built would allow for that to happen for building management in those pieces. We also have some shared staff between buildings that are restricted by time. We have some dual enrollment programming, fire science, that are also restricted as to when they can meet. So for example, fire science, the people that teach fire science at the fire department are coming off shift and stay after their shift to teach those classes. So we must offer that opportunity in that window. So if we were going to float a block around or rotate our schedule, that would really present a challenge for that program. And so in order, we met with Tammy Miller, who's in charge of our senior programming and internships and all of those programs, and made sure that we were able to continue to offer that based on the schedule. We also built this schedule with staffing in mind, so that we're not adding or subtracting staff. We'd love to add staff, that would be fantastic, but we didn't want to build a schedule that relied on that, and some schedule models would have pushed us in that direction. And then finally, we offer a very robust program of studies at Middleborough High School, and we're proud of that. What that creates is a large program of courses that we call singleton courses. It's offered one time, so like, there's one band, there's one section of Russian IV. And we have a number of classes like that, and that creates some scheduling log jams, because if a student wants that, it can only meet in that slot. We can't move them to other sections. And so we wanted to make sure that we created some flexibility within the schedule without eliminating those singleton courses. And so we worked at making sure that was a focus. So without further ado, here is our schedule. After a lot of back and forth and a lot of work and a lot of study, we came down to basically two schedules we were looking at, a more traditional type of schedule where students would carry eight classes in their rotation, they would see six classes each day, and you would drop two, and that was one model. And the other model is a modified version of a block schedule like we're in now. And the committee kind of came to a logjam, as many of these committees have, on where do we go? And it's a big step to move to a new schedule. And the faculty, really, both voices were very strong on what they wanted to see in the new schedule. And so what we did, through the work of this tremendous team that we have, was came up with something that blends all of those elements together, that we think is really powerful and is going to be a great move for our faculty and our staff and our students. So what we have is a hybrid of a traditional-type schedule and a block schedule. And so what we have will be a 10-day cycle, and days one through 10. And what we've done is we split it up into an orange week and a black week, just for the ease of understanding how the schedule works and the shift that would happen. So days one through four in our orange weeks would be our traditional-type schedule. So all students will be carrying eight classes at a time, and just as a reference to something Mr. Branigan mentioned, when we started the block schedule, students carried eight classes. That was something that they did. Many, many high schools carry seven or eight classes at a time. This is very a common feature. That will certainly be a shift. We know that, and that's something that we'll be working on. But they'll carry their eight classes, and in the orange week, they'll meet with six of those classes per day, and two classes will be dropped each day. And so you'll see that in a graphic in just a minute. And each class is 50 minutes long. And so that's a reduction from the 84 minutes down to 50-minute classes. And students will also have a directed study built into their school day. So the orange week will very much be a traditional schedule. I'm going to come back to the days five and 10 in just a minute. In black weeks, days six through nine, we go to a block schedule for those opposite weeks. And the block schedule will be a modification of what we do now. Each class would meet twice, so they'd rotate, four classes one day, four classes the next day, and then they would have one directed study and one advisory period built in. And then to round out our schedule on days five and 10, we have what we call our SACHM days, and this will include our new feature in our program for student choice and student voice in their schedule, some structured learning time, academic support, and our SACHM block, which we'll share more about in a minute. So to make this easier for you to see, we have this graphic here that kind of lays it out, kind of big picture, what it would look like. And some people have looked at it and said, this looks very much like a vocational schedule, where you'd have your two weeks in the classroom, and you have your instruction and all of those types of things, and we envision that in our traditional schedule week and our orange weeks. And then the shop weeks, when they have longer classes in their black week schedule, where you have your block schedule periods. So just to give you a more kind of detailed picture of what these weeks would look like, here's what an orange week schedule would look like. You'll notice a couple things. One, the schedule does not rotate, and that was intentional to ensure that we can maintain all of our programming, like fire science and dual enrollment and programming like that. You'll notice that classes G and H do float into the schedule and do meet at different times as they work into the schedule, but the rest of the periods do not rotate through the day. They just simply drop from the schedule on that specific day. And so any class that would be time-constrained, like fire science, would not be scheduled during class G or class H. It would be only in those spots where, like, classes A and B, that would be where there would be scheduled. You'll notice that each class is 50 minutes. We've built in, into our lunch period, a directed study time for our students, and this is an opportunity where students, under the direct supervision and work with a staff member in their room, have the opportunity to continue to work on practice examples, things that they were doing in class, and that opportunity to take that time to extend what they're doing in their classroom setting and to continue that work in their directed study time. And you'll notice that each class meets three out of four days in this cycle. So like, if you look at A block, for example, A period, it meets days one, three, and four, it drops on day two. And each class has that scenario. It drops one time in those four days. And this allows us, instead of seeing students every day in there, we're seeing them for fewer days, but we're actually going to, or fewer hours, but we're going to see them for more days over the course of the school year. So now, instead of seeing students for 90 days, we're going to see them for 126 days. That's a huge win for staff to be able to see them that many more times, get them that closer to MCAS exams or whatever, to maximize the number of minutes that they have with their students over those 36 extra days that they wouldn't have had before. So we're excited about that opportunity. In our black week, you'll notice we're in our more traditional block schedule, something we're very familiar with, and we are very confident that we are able to handle this week without much of a shift. You'll notice that each class meets twice during the week, they rotate between their eight classes, and each class will meet once for 90 minutes and once for 65 minutes. And that just gives those extra windows. We have a lot of programming in the 25 years that teachers have built using these block models, periods, labs, rehearsals, activities, project-based learning. There's so many things that we've done with the block in the 25 years that if our entire schedule went down to 50 minutes, we would lose a lot of those opportunities that we've built for 25 years. And so the staff was excited about maintaining some element of that block to preserve the best parts of what we do during those time periods, and also giving us the opportunity for those 50-minute classes for more direct instruction, a lot faster-moving, high engagement, things that will be better for our students. You'll also notice on day eight, they have one directed study built in to their schedule. The reason for the fewer directed studies in the black week is they're seeing fewer classes each day, and so there's less of a need for that extra time in there. And so we've built one in the week, and then we've maintained an advisory block, something that will be in development very much next year, a very different-looking advisory period, which is something that we'll address on our punch list next year. And you'll notice that periods three and four do flip. So if you look at day six, period C and D, and then day eight, period C and D flip, so they do rotate those two periods. The reason for that is currently, our block three is never touched. If you have a period three class, there is never a dropped minute, and that's because of the lunch period. We must maintain that lunch structure so that everybody gets their 30-minute lunch. And so in order to create an equitable schedule for everybody, the appropriate amounts of class time, and to not, you know, tie up that time, we flipped those blocks, and that won't impact our ability for our extra timelocked programming, because they're always paired up with the same two periods. And so we're pretty sure that that's going to work very well. And then the final segment of our schedule are the SACHM days, days five and 10. And on these days, you'll notice we see all eight of our classes for a short amount of time, 30 minutes for each class, and it's a quick hit with each class straight through their schedule, and here's the reason for that. And everybody raises their eyebrow when they see the 30 minutes. And at first, when we were looking at it, we're like, will this work or will this not? As we went through our work and met with faculty, it became something that people were really excited about, these opportunities to see all of their classes at the end of this cycle. So as we transition from the orange week to the black week, or the black week to the orange week, you'll see all your classes on one day to help make that transition. It's a great way to cap out your week as you're closing up learning for that week. You have an opportunity for some formative assessments, for some quick writes, for student-led activity, for a presentation. There's just so many different things that can be done during that time that we think will be very powerful. We also think it's really going to help with student momentum in class. So their school day is going to move, and they're always going to be moving. Those Fridays can be tough on some of these long weeks, and so students get antsy a little bit oftentimes, and staff sometimes, too. This will really help keep those days fresh and moving and give us a nice pivot point into the next school week. And you'll also notice the SACHM block. So if you look at the lunch period, there's no class scheduled during that time. And this spot has been reserved right now for the structure of what we're calling the SACHM block, which will be personalized learning time for our students, which we'll talk about here in just a minute for you.
With Justin's transition into the SACHM block, this was one of the elements in the 2019 model when we started building the schedule in 2019. This became a really focused area for us, and it became something that's really important for us now. When we keep talking about personalized learning, it really is about creating more opportunities for engagement with teachers outside of their direct class time. And so we found the fact that when you were looking at some of the challenges of having students always coming after school in some of those elements, it just becomes more and more complicated, especially as our students get older. And so to be able to find opportunities to build that into a school day where it's directed became really a game changer for us. So what you're going to see now is really just the elements of the beginnings of this. So know the fact that, as Justin mentioned a few minutes ago about building a punch list, what we've started to work at, probably all on our own sheets of paper, but then coming together to really create the punch list that will happen starting in July pending your approval, but then also throughout the upcoming school year, so that a lot of the elements of these different elements of our schedule will then begin to really be dug deep to figure out, well, how do we do it and what does it look like? But based upon the vetting that we've done, based upon the research that we've done, especially the SACHM block, we've researched schools that have actually have this model in place, software programming that they use to schedule students, and you'll see what we mean in just a moment. But I think when you see the SACHM block, it really can become a really exciting part of a school day for our students.
So the SACHM block is a kind of a flex period that only occur on days five or 10 in the rotation. Now, something before we share this, days five and 10 are the days that would be skipped in a rotation in the event we have a four-day school week. So for example, Memorial Day week, there's no school on Monday, or this week, we had the observation of Juneteenth on Monday, the 20th. We would not have the day five or 10 in that cycle. That way, we preserve the maximum amount of classroom time with our students. And so if you were to, you'll see in just a minute, if you were to map this out for a school year, these SACHM block days would happen a total of about 20, 21 times in the entire school year schedule. So it's not every single week, but it does happen regularly, but not always. And so it gives us some flexibility in how we run the building and make sure that our classroom time is preserved and is sacred, and that this personalized time we can map out into our year strategically. So this flex period, students will have access to teachers and school staff for academic support. That's really the core of what this period would be, academic support for our students. And you'll see that in a minute. School guidance curriculum, which currently we try to offer in advisory periods or pull-out models, we'll be able to put this into a spot dedicated in our schedule. Some really powerful enrichment opportunities, special workshops, guest speakers, and other programming, not traditionally offered in our school day, because right now, students are in class or they're pulled out of class, and so this will give us some of that. Some of the benefits of a period like this in our schedule, we have personalized learning time for students, which is something that is part of our NIOSC self-study that we'll be looking at, how do we offer that? Help meet this trend and what is best for our students. We're really excited about the extra layers of support for our students who are either unable, unwilling, or unlikely to stay after school. This will give some opportunity to really engage with those students. And one of the great things that we're looking at is some programming that allows to really track how that's going and to give us some data that's coming back. Is this working with a particular student? So if a teacher sees a student in academic support four times, is that paying off in the classroom? And we'll be able to see some of that information that'll come back to us based on some of the tracking that we will do. We're excited about, this is a about, this is an opportunity to maybe bring in some community partners, make some real world connections with our students. We used to have a program where we brought, you know, different vocations into the building during students' lunch. They could eat their lunch, go up to the library, and, and talk with someone in a particular field. This would be a place we could do some of those types of things. And one of the other major benefits on the staff side of things is that we have been able to, through this S H M block, is to provide some common planning time for teachers in the school day, which is really something that's very much needed to help with a lot of the tasks that teachers do every day and to work together in teams, whether it's in department or interdepartment teams, or whatever that's going to look like, it provides that time as well. So these would happen on days five and 10 in our schedule in that lunch period, and this will be very mapped out and planned out. This is not something we'll just be flying by the seat of our pants. We'll have this thing all set to go. Students would enroll in sessions that staff members have created, and staff will go in well in advance. We, part of that work next year will be to line out kind of the timeframe, how that works, but students would enroll for academic support. If they're not doing well in a class, teachers can schedule, hand-schedule a student into their class to make sure that they see that student, and the, the student will come to that teacher for a set number of weeks. So they'll sign up for four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, and go through that cycle of every time these days come up, they'll go to that schedule with that teacher, and they'll move through. And each student will have three sessions in that, up to three sessions in that time period. So if you look at this graphic here, roughly what it looked like, this is how it looked for teachers. Teachers would have their lunch period, and then some common planning time, which is C P T on that, on that graphic in front of you. And then teachers would be offering two sessions to work with students, where it says open, they would offer a 30-minute session, and teachers could offer one 60-minute or two 30-minute sessions. And then on the student end, they would have their lunch in three sessions, up to three sessions that they would attend. And so as we build this out, students will be able to go in, sign up for the sessions that are best for them. Teachers will be able to auto-enroll students that need it, and open up those opportunities. And so as we started to map this out, this is just a rough framework to show you what this might look like over the course of a school year. A lot of this will really happen next year on this, but to show you kind of what it looks like, you know, if you look at this sample schedule, if you look at that blue shaded area, cycle one, students would sign up right at the beginning of school for their sessions, and the whole first half of the year is focused on academic support and guidance curriculum, to give our students a really solid academic footing for their entire school year. So study strategies, all those skills that they might need. Students who might need the extra support, who are struggling in a class, students who need to be challenged further, who are doing great in a class, will have some extension opportunities to get support in that way. And so the whole first half of the year will be based on this kind of academic support model. And as we shift to second semester, you'll notice that we start to potentially offer some enrichment opportunities beyond just the traditional academic support. So this is where staff members optionally would be able to offer extra sessions for students to engage in a different way. And so if, if I, as a music teacher, were going to offer a special programming class for sound engineering, where they come and use the digital music lab for one of those sessions, students, if they're doing well in their classes and don't need to go into academic support, could come down for that and sign up for that session. And so that would be the second half of the year. I think that frames out the S H M block.
And just if you remember, we came before you with our school improvement plan about the future-ready program, and that this is one of the areas where we see it really coming to life, is really working with our community partners to become, to be able to come in and provide mentoring, to provide workshops. For the upperclassmen in our building, they would remember the 21st century learning conferences, and that this would really become part of just the culture of that, where they would have an opportunity to do career exploration or whatever it may be. And we had mentioned to you a little while ago about software that we're exploring ways of how do you schedule that, because you're really looking at a schedule within a schedule. And also the fact that we've researched schools that actually, high schools that have something very similar to what we've been envisioning, and how they have navigated it as well. So that's been really helpful for us to be able to say, well, what was our entry point look like in the planning? But if you notice the fact, there's no wiggle room, that it becomes a very structured schedule for us, which allows for us to be able to plan effectively when you're looking at really the beginning part of the year of really focusing on academic achievement. And then really for those students who have really hit the ground, and they're really in a good spot, that it becomes an opportunity for them to do that enrichment work in the, in the spring, but also it becomes an incentive opportunity for students who really want to be able to, to do that workshop potentially, but they really need to make sure they're having that time with the academic enrichment or academic support with the teachers. So it's a pretty exciting opportunity for our students.
So we've given you the kind of three structural pieces of the new schedule, the Orange Week, the Black Week, and the S H M days. What I want to share with you briefly here is just, we've done a lot of due diligence on this model to make sure that we meet the various requirements that we have by state law, DESI regulations, our own district policy. And so I just want to share a few things with you to make sure that you can see that as well. Here on this table here, you can see mapped out what our class period numbers look like. So if you look at the column furthest to the left, you see A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, those are the learning periods, followed by advisory-directed study and our academic support S H M block, and how many minutes each of those would meet for in the 10-day cycle. And so as you move across the columns and get all the way over, you can see that each of our class periods would meet for seven out of each 10 days in the cycle. All right? So, and when, if you map that out over the entire school year, that's 126 contact days. So for a full-year course, currently a five-credit course for us, they would be seeing their teacher 126 times. Many of our elective classes would still be a semester-based class, and so they would see their teachers 63 times, half that amount of time. And you'll notice that total contact hours for each course, for a full-year course, would be just about 110 hours, 109.5 in the schedule. We also looked, we met with Mr. Lynch previously, and he asked us right away about time on learning, so I wanted to share that with you to make sure that we, share that we do meet the time on learning requirements. We've posted the regulation here that we must follow. We must offer 990 hours, and those hours are very well-defined in DESI regulations about what does and does not count. And so after we've done all of our work, you will notice, this is our time on learning breakdown for the year, and you can see the number of minutes for class time, directed studies, advisory, S H M block, lunch, and passing time, to total 1,170 hours in the school year. That's the totality of 180, 80-day school year. And you'll notice at the end, in the orange, class time would constitute 888 of those hours. Directed studies, which do count if they're structured appropriately, they do count. The DESI regulations would be 62.4 hours. Advisory, which also does count towards time on learning, would be 12. The S H M block, 54. And then students would spend 90 hours a year in lunch, and 63.6 hours in a school year, passing from class to class. And if you look at this table here, you'll notice the areas shaded in green all count towards time on learning, and that puts us at 1,016.4 hours. The times that do not count are lunch and passing time, and students will spend 153.6 hours in times that do not count. And yes, that's a lot of hours in passing time, but that time adds up, those three minutes between each class, if you add them up each day, they come out to a lot of time.
So as for, in terms of, this really gives you an overview of really what the structure of the schedule will be. And in, in, to be quite honest, is maybe questions you may have that we're not going to have the answers to in the immediate, because in terms of actually the working of certain elements of that structure, that's part of the work in the upcoming year. So the, the, the goal, as I said at the beginning, that our committee really believes is the fact that, you know, this schedule is a viable one for our school, and we think it could really be, in so many ways, a very current, modern schedule for this building and for the needs of our students, and then to be coming to you throughout the year when it's appropriate, when we have an update, to be able to share with you, well, this is what we've done in terms of our S H M block. This is what we've done with our program of studies. So part of this upcoming year is really going to be building all the infrastructure around the lunch, so that we can come to you a year from now and say we're ready, and that when the school opens in September of 23, that we are ready to go, and here's what's going, it's going to look like in terms of taking the structure, but now all the behaviors that will be around that as well. So I do want to, before we take any questions, it's just, I forgot one member of the committee who could not be here tonight, and that is Sean Kinney, who's our World Language Department Chair. So he's been instrumental in the work as well. My apologies for missing him.
I've neglected, just for the, especially for the community who might be watching at home, and any students, there is one final piece I meant to share, and I skipped by. So I just wanted to go back real quick. One of the pieces that we wanted to address in the new schedule is some added flexibility for our students. There are a lot of logjams in our schedule, because we offer just a massive program of studies, which is a strength of what we do at Middleboro High. But for many of our students who are trying to take just the right combination of courses, some of those kind of conflict with each other, and they have to make choices between different courses. And so we can't solve that with any schedule in 100% certainty. What we've tried to do in the schedule is to open up some new opportunity for some flexibility, and we think we've been able to do that. And I just wanted to share that with you real quick here. So under this new model, most of our AP courses, right now, they meet for three quarters of the school year. So they meet every day first semester and every other day second semester. And that allows for them to meet all the way through their AP exam. And we've been through a long history of different changes with that, but ultimately, those courses have been seven and a half credits. And that ties up those credits for students in their schedule, that extra half year every other day. So this new model, where students will be in their course, it'll be a five-year, a five-credit course now, which will free up the two and a half credits. And that's possible because they'll be meeting with their teachers more times. And our staff was confident that even with the slight reduction in total hours, which is small in the grand scope of the entire course, they'd still be able to deliver their AP courses appropriately. And so with that slight reduction, we can take that extra time of credits, and for students taking an AP course, that gives them that extra time to perhaps fit in one of the other courses they were trying to take. So here's an example, one that's near and dear to me as the band director. I'd like to have my students for the full school year. We have programming, fall and spring, and some students come up against logjams in terms of credits or conflicts with other courses. So here's a student in the, the current model, where it says old schedule, where they got to 40 credits, which is our maximum, and they can only fit two and a half credits of band in their schedule with the AP course that they were taking. Under the new schedule, that AP course would go from seven and a half to five, which would give them that extra two and a half credits, which potentially, if their schedule works out appropriately, would give them that opportunity to go from band from one semester to the full year. And so that's just one example for one singleton class. There are other singletons in similar situations. And so for our students in some of that programming, we think that's going to give them just that much more flexibility to take some of those courses that they might want to take. And again, it's not going to be perfect, because I, I said to Paul earlier, if I could take the program of studies from 1997 and put it up and show you what we offered for courses versus what we offer now, it would be stunning to see the difference. We offer so many things for our students, and that can create some scheduling challenges, to be honest, that, that can't be overcome with any one's schedule.
Just finally, just this, the reason why I wanted to close with this up here, and I'm glad Justin put it up, that we ended up doing a beta test on this schedule. And so we took probably easily 40 different schedules, and we took it from an array of students in the school, and we did it with the, the graduating class that just left us a few weeks ago. And we took their entire journey of high school, and we plugged it in under the new schedule. And so we literally rewrote a transcript on paper, and that was really a testament to this team. And we were able to see an array of students, from the student who was the band student, to a student who potentially was in a learning strategies class, to the student who had 19 different AP courses that they wanted. So we really tried to find a different arrangement of different schedules, and took that transcript and redesigned scheduling for each and every year of high school, if that student was to start as a ninth grader, and what would it have looked like by the time they graduated. And we found that overall, in all areas, that we found that it gave more flexibility. It allowed students to get everything that they wanted and then some. And there were areas where we looked at each other and said, this is one of those environments where the student would have to make a choice, because we know that's always going to be part of a schedule. But we were really quite pleased with the amount of, of, of what it did show when we were able to align it with the schedule. So as we're kind of, kind of sharing our information and to be able to take comments and questions, we thought it was important to just share that with you, but also with the community as well, of that testing that we had done with, with transcripts in the school.
I do want to add to, Justin, your example up there of the student who wants to take band, was taking a lot of AP courses, having lived that, two things. One is, for a lot of those kids, they're still participating in band. You're just sort of giving them private direction on what they have to do to get ready for band. So in a lot of ways, we're asking those kids to do extra. And then on top of that, we're asking them, in some cases, to choose between something they truly love and aren't being able to do that because they want to, you know, get themselves more prepared for school, which I think is unfortunate and always has been unfortunate under this, this piece. So I appreciate that. That, that's the first thing that I saw. But I'll open it, Rich, go ahead.
Sure. First of all, it seems like incredible amount of work, and all the analysis is super helpful for me to see, you know, the time on learning, contact days, all that stuff. And it's also really clear that this solves a lot of practical challenges, and I just was noting down some of the big wins, I think, you know, guidance, academic support, attention spans versus passing time versus contact days, S H M block versus four-day weeks. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of wins in there, the singleton classes you guys mentioned. But I wanted to ask, is, besides solving those practical problems, which probably is enough, what are the metrics for success that we can look at in a year? How do we determine if this really did work? And what are the, the areas that you're looking at to see if it worked?
I, I think in an immediate sense, just from the scheduling standpoint, in terms of a student's schedule, that, you know, we're in the home stretch of finalizing our schedules for the fall, and the, there are always conflicts, because you're working through that student who needs to make those choices. So I think in the immediate, Mr. Oakley, it would be really being able to identify that when we really design the schedule and build it, and students are getting their schedule or their list of the courses that they're taking for the upcoming year, and if you're finding the fact that they are really being able to, what they requested is matching what they got. Because I think that's a huge part of that, because students have to choose up to 40 credits every year, and then they choose alternate. So the, the magic is, what you're hoping for is, is that when the student gets their printout of courses, it's going to, one, match 40 credits, two, it's going to be exactly what it is that they selected or alternates that had to be brought in. And that is going to be really, I think, in the immediacy, which I think will be huge, is to see whether or not, does it actually, do the request truly match, in, in most cases, what they're actually being scheduled for. So I think in the immediate metric, that would be one.
And then as we roll forward and we roll the schedule out for a couple of years, we'll get more and more data back. And our staff is very confident. The department chairs have done a lot of work with this, particularly in math and English and science. The ability to see students more times, they really think is going to be very, very beneficial, because just the momentum in a class period is very challenging with where we're at in education right now. And so to be able to make more progress over more days, so, you know, we have situations where they're jamming things in to get ready for MCAS. And so to see kids more times before that's going to happen is going to be a huge win. And we're not going to be able to see, you know, a lot of that, those data points in the immediate, but over time, our staff is very comfortable and very, that's, that's one of the reasons that was such a huge priority. I think we'll be able to, to see that over time.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So as a middle school teacher who just has like my seven classes and that's it, this gives me a giant headache. So I can't even imagine the amount of work that you guys put into this. I mean, you looked at, like, everything. You did research, you, you looked at the time on learning, you looked at the breakdown of how much time was going to be in every class. And again, to echo Rich, I was a band person and a chorus person, and I couldn't do both. So I kind of like alternated. But I just wanted to thank you, because this is just an extremely complicated topic, and you guys put in so much hard work to this, so I really appreciate that.
I just have one clarification on the S H M block for personalized.
I just have one clarification on the Satchem block for personalized learning. Will 100% of the students have structured time somewhere? Or will some of them have, like, free study or something like that? Or are they all going to be scheduled into something, whether it's academic support, some sort of an enrichment?
So some of that work, to be honest, will be done next year as part of this. I will tell you that based on conversations with other school districts that are already using this model, that we've kind of built it around, every student is enrolled in sessions. And so what those sessions look like will really be up to how we structure that next year as we build it out. But there's not going to be any free roaming students. I can tell you that's not something we're looking for.
No, perfect. That was it.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Go right ahead.
It's not a question. I attended the community night that they did earlier and I just thought it, again, everything you guys have said, so much thought. I think from my perspective, the thing I'm most excited about is that continuity of learning and the ability to go from a math class to having just a summer off and then the next math class. Foreign language, music even, you know, you can lose so much momentum if every time you start the block off with, let's see if we remember how much we learned last year. And there's always that at the beginning of a school year. But it's very different if 10 weeks have gone by than if it's been five months. So I think it's not just a benefit to the students going from ninth grade to 10th to 11th, but also graduating seniors who are then going to go to college and take the language placement test or the math placement test or something. You know, they will have had that class right up until they graduate instead of potentially having finished in December or January. So I think this is just a wonderful opportunity for all the students. I understand completely the headache it gives you. And I'm very happy that my kids are old enough that I won't have to, you know, hopefully, most of all the high school students will just remember. Or there'll be signs and banners everywhere, I'm sure. But I just fully support looking at the continuity of learning and what this opportunity brings. Plus, you know, being able to take course the whole year will make some other kids really happy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Please.
Just had a question with regard to the Satchem block. If that happens on a Friday, there's going to be a schedule for that, obviously. Does that get reduced? The Satchem day? You had an early release schedule for early release days?
Yep.
But I'm just wondering if that happens to be a Friday, which we have a lot of early release days on Friday, what happens to that Satchem day?
So when we build out the master calendar for the school year, every day will be locked on those days. And we wouldn't schedule a Satchem day on a half day.
Okay. And a snow day, does the rotation change or does it?
We will skip the days. And the reason for that is very intentional. After meeting with Tammy Miller for our senior programming, it would really offset our programming with like Massa Soyia and Fire Science. So we're going to lock everything in. Now, if we get in an emergency where we, you know, we have four scheduled days that are canceled in a row, then there might need to be a shift. But that would be an extenuating circumstance.
And my last question is the vetting process. You started with, obviously, with the faculty at the high school, which is the most important piece, right away to get people's heads wrapped around some of these changes. Secondly, you brought in central office and we had that meeting where we went through the process with you. How about the students? You said you vetted the students. What was the student reaction? What was the student voice in terms of the change? Because sometimes juniors or seniors, this is all they've known in the high school. And to introduce something not as radical, but as different as this is, what was the reaction?
So we offered some sessions for students where they could come down and meet with us and hear about the schedule and provide some feedback. And we had a number of students that took advantage of that. The students overall were really excited about the opportunity. One, for that continuity of learning. That was one of the things we heard right off the bat. To see teachers more times, they thought was really beneficial. And to reduce the amount of class, excuse me, the number of minutes in a class period in those orange weeks. They were excited about. There was some kind of reservation or just some concern about, well, how will this impact my senior year if this is the first year of this schedule? And so we were able to reassure them that because we built this schedule around eight learning periods, it really shouldn't have a major impact unless it's positive. Because you're still going to have your eight learning periods. But with that change in the AP course schedule, which many of the students in those sessions were concerned about, they might actually have more flexibility. And as students get to their senior year, many of them do actually have more flexibility anyway. So by and large, the students were excited about it. I think it was overwhelming because it's very different than the very simple block schedule to understand. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you. To Nathan, what do you think, Nathan?
From just seeing what, everything that's been presented, I think that it's a very good schedule. There's so much thought into it and there's a lot more. It's going to be a little bit to understand about the whole block thing. But it'll take a little bit of time, just like everything else. But, I mean, the way it looks, it looks fantastic. It looks like there's a lot more opportunity for choices. And again, the continuity of the classes, making it easier when we get prepped for SATs or anything else, like it really just will set a good standard for us.
Super. Thank you. And thank you to the committee. I really appreciate it. A lot of work.
So to be clear, Paul, we're going to make a, I'm going to accept a motion from the school committee to approve the direction in which you're going. So obviously, you can keep going in that direction. So Chair, I'll accept a motion to approve the direction in which the committee is going.
Second?
Discussion, just for purposes of discussion so everyone understands. This is still a contractual piece, so there would have to be an opportunity for us to work out some details of this with the MEA. It would more than likely be through a MOA, a memorandum of understanding. MEA is the Middleborough Education Association, so I don't just speak in acronyms the entire night. So there will be multiple sorts of bites at this apple for the school committee, just so everyone understands. But this is to allow the group to continue their work, moving towards that direction of which we're approving. Because if we weren't going to approve it, then they need to look someplace else if we've decided not to go that way. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next on my report, I will continue. We have Dr. Terry Markulaitis, who's going to give us an update on our summer programming in the middle of public schools outside of the extended school year program. Welcome, Dr. Markulaitis.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. So I'm just going to give an update of what I talked about a couple of weeks ago and also discuss some of the new things that we're working on for the summer. So summer splash. The coordinators again are Jen Gorman and Emma Del Vecchio. The enrollment for this program closes on Friday, so there is still time and there's still some space available. I also want to make it clear that we do have scholarships available for people to take advantage of if they have financial hardships. We really want to make sure that these programs are open to all of our students. We have credit recovery at both the middle school and the high school, run by Scott Redpath and Kylie Bowen, respectively. And then we have our fine arts program by Justin Pittsley, who you just heard from. And those are just a few of our programs that we're offering. And then I want to talk to you about the curriculum work that's happening over the summer. This is something, I was talking with Carolyn about this on my way in. We've had over 50 teachers sign up to do this work this summer. And that's pretty amazing after the really challenging school year that we have all experienced. So I'm very excited that teachers feel the need for this work and that they are willing to do this work over the summer and take some time from their relaxation to support our curriculum needs. Some of the things that we're looking at, we're doing some work on our foundational literacy, scope and sequence. So really, our phonics in K1 and 2, we've noticed some gaps that we are hoping we can address with the work that we're doing this summer. Colleen Randall will be leading that work. She is a first grade teacher and she was an instructional coach in the district. One of the things that we know our district is struggling with is writing. So to that end, we are working on creating writing prompts for grades K through 8. These will be benchmark prompts, so they will be given twice a year, beginning of the year and end of the year. We will be focusing on different types of writing, really looking to see that our students are able to meet the needs at their specific grade level in different types of writing. And finally, in ELA, at the K through 8 level, we're looking at a scope and sequence of mini lessons in reading that are aligned with the mass frameworks. So while we have been using Leslie for quite some time and it's a great program, we have noticed some gaps that we're not addressing all the standards as deeply as we could. And so this work will address those deficits. We are bringing on a supplemental health program for middle school and high school. And Ed Finch, our middle school health teacher, is going to be doing some work in this program this summer, just aligning the work that he has already done with the new program that we're bringing on. It's really just adding to the work that he has already done and enhancing our program in some areas where we noticed some gaps. Freshman Academy, which is something that Paul asked us to look into. I think there's about 10 teachers involved in this. And it's really revising the current structure of the freshman academy, bringing that back, making sure that they are set up for success in their first year, all the way through their last year. We have some work happening in World Language. We are doing some co-curricular work with Russian and French. And the high school English department is working on integrating advanced skills so that our students who are taking AP classes really have what they need for success in those areas. I think that about covers it. Yep, that's it. It's a lot of work and we're really excited about it.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Go ahead, Rich.
Sure. I was just wondering, I was happy to hear you mention about the scholarships that are available for some of the summer programs.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming parents probably know already how to do that. But just in case there are some that don't, that may be listening, who do they contact to apply for one of those? How does that work?
Sure. So they can go through the coordinators of the program or they can come directly to me. And either way, the information is on the website.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
If there's nothing further, thank you, Dr. Markulaitis. We appreciate the update.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you too.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Carolyn Lyons, who's going to discuss the School Street proposal further that we heard about two weeks ago. Welcome, Dr. Lyons. Well, you have the JD.
She does.
Welcome, Carolyn Lyons.
Thank you. While Sean is just queuing up the PowerPoint, you guys received this in Dropbox earlier this week. As I mentioned last session, I spoke about this building as a piece of living history. And both Sean Cicliano and Superintendent Lynch helped me track down some photos that I could share with you tonight. These are two older photos. This building was built in 1907 and has served in multiple fashions as a junior high school, an intermediate school, an elementary school, and then most recently with the Reed's Collaborative. And I'm happy to share, on this 50th anniversary of Title IX, this photo that Superintendent Lynch shared with me as the School Street School Girls Basketball Team of 1913, 1914. And, you know, at this time in American history, sports for women were a bit tenuous. And if you'll indulge me, particularly since it's my last meeting with you as your Title IX Coordinator for the district, I thought that this was particularly poignant to share this evening as we celebrate 50 years. I don't know, you know, I've never really presented too too much on Title IX. But Patsy Mink was the Congresswoman who co-authored Title IX, which is a federal civil liberties law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in any school or educational organization that receives federal funds. And I just find it, it's a moment of pride for me to celebrate the athletes from the softball team earlier this evening and share this particular photo that our current superintendent found. It tells you a little bit about this community and about that sense of belonging I've talked to you about before. So I wanted to bring this photo, just so you could see that is taken at School Street School. And I thought that was pretty cool. Okay, down to business. As I told you, the wisdom behind this plan was to return spaces to buildings. So what I'm going to break down for you in this presentation is exactly what I'm talking about. Four classrooms, two breakout spaces and a storage area at Nichols, one classroom and one breakout space at HBB. There is a cascading effect at the elementary complex, MKG and HBB, resulting in intervention space, centralizing specialized programs and moving TLC Ames and the language-based program as a result of this process. Two breakout spaces at the MEK and decreased traffic flow to the MEK parking lot. You know, this is something we haven't talked about too too much, but that is a tight parking lot, particularly this year with the CIC testing location there. It can be tricky at times. So all of those spaces that I'm going to point out on schematic maps for you are what we are returning to the buildings in this proposal to, you know, move to School Street School. What you see in this schematic are all the purple circles. These are all of the spaces being returned to the building. So as you can see in this A cluster, that entire wing, and these smaller circles are more breakout spaces that can be used, multi-use space. When you go to the, I don't have a pointer, but the same rules apply on this particular schematic. These purple circles, which I don't think I can, yeah, I can. Can you see my cursor? So this is a classroom. This is a breakout space. Now, what the orange circles represent is that currently, students in the, well, let's start with these larger circles, these ovals. Currently, these students receive service and they do not have a breakout space for the service. So this would make class sizes, you know, not all of the time smaller, but periodically smaller in all of these wings as a result of having intervention space. And then this media center is actually going to be reimagined with our TLC program at the Berkland School. So what happens when you return spaces to buildings is that the buildings get very creative about how to maximize that space. And Lisa White and Derek Thompson are never an exception to that rule. The impacted space at the MEK, this is the third floor, involve these two breakout spaces, which currently has the transportation office. Okay, so when you go into the School Street School, it is essentially an eight-classroom building. It's the easiest way to think about it. And as you can see on the first floor, in these front-facing offices, are the two offices where our community will be most interactive. The first is the registrar and data specialist. So when a family is new to Middleborough or transferring into Middleborough, this is a space for them to come. It is not at a busy school. There is ample parking. It's easily accessible. It's handicapped accessible. And gives, you know, a first impression to our newest members of our school community. And then the PPS office, which still houses all of the special education records, which I can attest is a very busy place. Families very frequently need information from this space. When it's up, kind of tucked behind, you know, the top floor at the Nichols, it can be difficult to access. These two front-facing offices would be here. Behind the PPS office would be the Director of Special Education's office. And behind the data specialist and registrar would be the Director of Curriculum. When I go to the second floor, there are, this is obviously not accessible from, I mean, you climb the stairs, but I mean, it's not front-facing on the first floor. You'll see the Superintendent of Schools Office and Assistant, along with the IT Coordinator, the Director of Student Services, and then this place, this space here is a PD Center that is currently located in the Nichols Middle School. Sorry about that. What I was going to say about the PD Center is it will also be a meeting space. So I spoke with Meg Quirk, our Family Resource Coordinator, and she discussed a desire to hold events and bring families to a centralized space for a wide variety of reasons, learning opportunities. for a wide variety of reasons: learning opportunities, outreach, various, you know, info sharing. And now there's a space that's centrally located where, again, you're in the middle of town. You can walk there if you're local, local to that space. So that's the proposal for how the space would be used. In order to make this concept a reality, there are some improvements that are needed, which includes basic flooring in the classroom space, a heating system upgrade, some interior paint, some adjusted lighting fixtures, some bathroom upgrades, some IT and electrical upgrades, which involves wiring and making sure all of these spaces have internet access, as an example. Some minimal office furniture, and then the paving. So when I look at the projected cost of this project, which, again, this is a ballpark figure. It is certainly by no means, you know, an actual amount yet. What you're looking at is ultimately the cost of cosmetic improvements, the digitization of personnel files, which, this was something that came up in the planning process. The personnel files at Flora Clark are shared between the business office and the superintendent's office. And so splitting those two offices up presents a bit of a problem because these files are held in paper format. This would include the cost of digitizing those files. And then going forward, those files would be held digitally, which is more in line with our practice. Student files are all held digitally now as well. And then the cost of moving. So the ballpark is roughly $300,000. The cost of this project would be fully covered by the three income streams below, which really aren't income streams. But, I mean, Chapter 70 funding, there was a reallocation, which allows us to fund a portion of this amount. The facility's rental revolving account. And then lastly, any available unspent FY '22 monies. There have been occasions this year where we prepaid tuitions and things shifted, meaning a student came back into district or a student moved out of district, which leaves that money to be used. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have. And hopefully, this was-
Question. I know we discussed this a little bit last time, so. Rich, you have a question to write.
Sure. Thank you very much. Again, like I said last time, it sounds like it's a win-win-win-win, no matter how you look at it. One question I had for you was about the area on the second floor. Mark, just Superintendent of Schools. And I was just curious, what from the current superintendent building will be coming there? Is it really just the superintendent, but the business office stays? Or how does that work?
Great question. Yeah, how is Flora Clark going to be used? Yes. So, and some of this is still to be ironed out. The moving parties from Flora Clark would be the superintendent's office and the assistant superintendent's office. So those two spaces. The business office, as we know it, Ms. Hickey's office, and all of the members on kind of the other side of the building are staying with transportation to be moving into Flora Clark. So we still have some details to iron out, but that was sort of the vision of the move.
Sure. And Mr. Chair, I'm sure no one in the business office will be upset about that because it feels like it's pretty tight to begin with. So that might allow for some nice expansion, I would guess.
So if I could just touch on that, there are actually a number of reasons why not moving the business office makes a lot of sense. One of them is, for those of you that don't know, we have two networks in town. They're both housed in, the central location is in the Town Hall. And then from the Town Hall, there's a network that branches out to all the town departments. And there's a network that branches out to all the schools. The Flora Clark Building is on the town network and the school network. So the, leaving the business office is means we don't have to run town network to the School Street School.
Got it.
As far as space in the business office, the, on the right-hand side of the building, the configuration of that office will stay the same.
Got it.
There's actually another reason to-
Marcia, you had a question?
Oh, sorry.
I have a quick question. Outside of the projected cost of the project, are there any future costs that you see directly impacting the overall operating budget of the school? Or is this something that you anticipate will be negligible on the operating budget?
Yeah, no, this is a great question because there will be an added cost to heat this building. We currently do heat the building, but it will need to be heated more. I do think this amount of money is negligible in the grand scheme of the budget, but there will be increases in additionally increased facilities cost because this building will need to be maintained by our Facilities Department as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, and Jim Hutchinson, our Facilities Director, is here at the meeting tonight. I just want to point out that a lot of these items here are things we would do as a matter of course for keeping the building, you know, improving the building, and hoping to find a suitor or somebody who was going to be leased. So we were going to do a number of these things, including paving. Some of these things were going to happen anyways. So there was money destined for these things. So just wanted to point that out a little bit.
And related to that, we had to upgrade the insides because otherwise it could only be used for a school. As currently constructed.
And we've had a regular series. Part of the rental we had with Reed's Collaborative was a $10,000 piece where we did improvements every year, correct, Ms. Hutch? Just a nod of the head, it's fine.
Mr. Chair, I also just wanted to say, with regards to the budget question, essentially, we are buying ourselves additional classroom space in all the buildings that Ms. Lyons mentioned. So if there is some kind of an increase in cost to run this building, it seems space is at a premium, especially as we all learned during the School Choice meeting. Seems like this is heading in the right direction. So I would guess that buying classroom space would be much more expensive than what you're proposing here. Seems like a pretty positive thing.
Yeah. Well, and try to remember, the reason for the reallocation for the Chapter 70 funds was as a result of increased enrollment. So when you're looking at how the state tells you to spend that money, it's pretty spot-on with, we have increased enrollment, so we are going to use this money towards space that is going to free up space for students.
Sure.
Any other questions from the committee?
I'll just take you back on what Ms. Lyons just said. I don't predict that that chapter, that's not a one-time thing with them. So we had a one-time payment for increased enrollment between October and February. But next year, that enrollment number will be part of our October 1st enrollment. So I expect there will be an increase in our Chapter 70 funding for the following year.
You had a question. Go right ahead.
I believe you said that the first floor is handicapped accessible, but not the second. Is that correct?
No, they both are.
They both are?
They both are. I was kind of fumbling over my words. I was just saying that the second, you know, you have to get to the second floor. It's not, you take an elevator to get there.
So there is an elevator. I didn't know if there was an elevator in the building.
Yep, there is an elevator in the building, which does carry a cost of maintenance as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Herringnut. Chairman, I entertain a motion to approve converting the-
School Street.
School Street School to the new superintendent's office and the new configuration as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Herringnut, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we leave my report, I just wanted to make a couple of comments with regards to the 1913-14 girls basketball team. Were you there to see it? No, thanks to, thanks to Mike Madigan and local historian, Recollecting the Masket Blog. He tells a story that was told in the Gazette about somebody that had some real pushback for this team, saying that these girls shouldn't be playing in this ruffian sport and that it should be reserved for males and that they should be a little bit more concerned with what they do. Because I guess basketball is a little bit of a rougher sport. The rules were not as, I don't know. But it's, these girls, if you look at the pictures, they're all smiling. It looks like they're really happy. It was, School Street School was a junior high at the time. So just a little background on that. And thanks again to Mike Madigan and Recollecting the Masket for that collection of photos. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is MSBA Middle High School Building Project. I would add, there's really no change. We haven't had a meeting since then. I know the tennis courts are almost completed.
Yeah, they're nearing completion, I would say. Hutch, I was up there today a little bit, and the courts are laid out. The nets aren't in or anything like that yet, but they're still working. And they're on site, and I would say probably within a week or so.
Yeah, and then they're supposed to be turned over to us pretty quickly after that.
For those that couldn't hear, Hutch, it will be done in just about a week. They're going to do the surfaces of the actual courts and the basketball court, correct? Fences are done, and installation of the nets. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions about that?
See, no. I put a couple of things on the agenda, just reminding people. There is an MAS-C reviewing and updating policy manual webinar, which is one of the more fascinating webinars you'll ever get to attend in your life for Mass Association of School Committee. The Mass Association of School Superintendents. Executive Institute is July 11th through 14th, which the new superintendent will be attending. MAS-C, MAS-S Annual Conference is November 2nd through 5th. It's at Hyannis Resort and Conference Center. If people can let me know if they're interested, only because there is a cheaper rate if you buy before the end of July. I also did send out the subcommittee assignments today. And we have one other action item, and that's the technology surplus. Sean put in our boxes a list of technology surplus material that he would like to be able to get rid of. Chair, I entertain a motion to approve this surplus list.
Second.
Discussion.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask, there are a lot of devices on there that are going. And I just wondered if people wanted to know what, you know, specific models and all that were out there. Is that list something we could get our hands on?
Yeah, so there is a, there is a process we have to go through, especially with hard drives to surplus these items.
Yep.
So if we were to give these items to anybody, we would remove the entire hard drive, just for security purposes. The Chromebooks that are on there are actually end-of-life. The way Chromebooks work is they, they kind of have a six-year lifecycle. And once those six years, seven years is up, Google says, "We're not going to support them anymore." You can't take updates. You can't get security updates. You can't have applications on them. So it kind of forces you into keeping your file fresh, which we're going to start planning for, for next year as we bought the 2,000 Chromebooks two and a half years ago. So the Chromebooks are end-of-life. The Windows devices were from the seniors last year, from the class of 2021. They had a good four years of being used every day. But yeah, the, we could do the, it would go through, it's going to go through the surplus process to go to the town for the computers, but the hard drives would be pulled for that, so.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, just a follow-up. By the way, thank you. If there, if there is a group that's interested that is not a town department, what would be the timeframe for them to submit a request? Or how does that happen? Do you know?
I would defer to Mr. Lynch. I know there's a process. I'm just-
So it goes through town departments first, and then there's a process for which he's allowed to get rid of them. That doesn't mean that anyone's allowed to come up and ask for them. So he'd have to post it as, for lack of, you know, there's a wide variety of ways. Sorry, he can post it as an action. He can post it as whatever. He can't necessarily just give it to anybody who asks for it.
Okay.
Okay, because there has to be a process for anyone to get it after that. And so we can look into that. I know in the past, for example, Hutch is one of the, there was a site that you went on, Hutch, in the past, where you put up a couple of things for bid, and people had the opportunity to bid for them, so.
Old trucks and old buses and such.
Yeah, so. And there is a municipal site, just because I saw something recently from Taunton, that Taunton uses a particular municipal site. So, I mean, there's, there's a fee attached to that, but we're getting rid of them anyway. So if he makes a profit, not a profit, but if he just makes a couple of bucks off it, it makes a couple of bucks off.
And we do have a company that does our electronic disposal for us. They're out of a local company out of Bridgewater, West Bridgewater. And we take the hard drives out of all the machines. We give it to them. They take it for free, get rid of it for us, which is a benefit to us. A lot of times, a cost to getting rid of electronics. So we're grateful for that, too.
Cool. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So a motion on the table to approve the surplus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Just a quick update before I get into my final topic. In looking at, we usually meet once a month during the summer. We will probably meet the third Thursday of each month in July and August, based on some other things going on. And then September, again, meet the first and third, starting that way. And what we'll do is, in the September one, we'll look at any issues that we encounter, as we usually do. For example, it usually runs into, like, February school vacation or something like that, so we'll work out those at that time, okay? So before we go, tonight is the final school committee meeting of our friend sitting next to me and our fearless leader. So I did want to give school committee members an opportunity to say goodbye. So I'll open the floor up to you guys, and then I'll finish it off. Meg, go ahead, Meg.
I just wanted to thank you, just for everything. For me personally, I came in and just didn't know very much about anything. And you were very gracious in letting me come to a bunch of different meetings and offering me guidance and support and just answering any question that I had. So I was very, very grateful for that and just for everything that you've done for our district for the number of years that you've been here. So thank you.
Thanks, Meg. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, for everything. I mean, I have a similar story to Meg, although Meg's been in schools for a while, so she at least had a little bit more than I did with the acronyms and all that fun stuff. But, but no, I think you've been a really nice partner for someone like me that not only didn't necessarily know the way things worked, but also didn't necessarily know how to interact with you and your office and all the different members of administration. And I always found you to be really collaborative and super supportive. And I think we really need that in a superintendent because that is a way to encourage community participation. Because if it felt like it was a battle all the time, no one would want to run for this seat, I don't think. And so I think it's a huge benefit to the school committee, to the community, and not to mention all the stuff you do outside of your role as superintendent. So I think we're super lucky, and I'm really sad to see you go.
Thank you, Rich.
But I know we're in good hands, obviously, with Ms. Lyons. And, but big, literally, big shoes to fill, so. So thank you.
I mean, I know we haven't worked together for very long, but thank you for welcoming into the group. But more personally, I'd like to say thank you for running a district that I feel confident raising my family in. And back in 2017, we were looking for a bigger home. And our biggest thing was, we wanted to stay in Middleborough because of the schools, and that's a testament to how you ran it and the great school system we have here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That's what it's all about.
Yep.
So my friend, I was trying to figure out today. This is my 14th year as a school committee member between two districts. I had the great fortune of starting my school committee career with your dad. He was my first superintendent in Amon. I will say this, I think I've worked with lots of superintendents. The pieces that strike me about Brian over all others is, Brian is truly the first superintendent I've ever worked with. When you ask about what he's accomplished, he doesn't talk in terms of he. He talks in terms of his team. And that's really a sign of somebody I appreciate and somebody I recognize. I didn't know Brian really well when this all started. I knew his daughters and his wife, but I didn't really know Brian. It was just the way things worked out. And so I'm also grateful for your friendship over this period in time. We have tomorrow, which is your goodbye party. But I would be remiss in thinking for this committee what we could give you for a present to say goodbye. And so I would say, aside from your love of being a Sachem and being a member of this school and leading this school, and aside from your love of low numbers on automobiles.
Oh, jeez.
The one thing I think you appreciate more than anything, and you come back to over and over again, is family. over again is family. And so with the blessing of our high school principal, I thought about the one gift that we could give you as a school committee. It is unusual for the chair to make a motion, and I will, I'm allowed to, but I will make a motion tonight, and I would ask the committee, again, with the blessing of Mr. Paul Branding, that we allow the superintendent, Brian Lynch, to give the diploma to his daughter when she graduates as a Satchem in a couple of years. So with that, I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Awesome idea.
Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Once again, you got me.
And so, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank you, the members of the committee here tonight, and all the members that I've worked with over the past seven years. We've always had productive committees. We've had pushback at times, we've had discussions at times, but that have brought us to, to me, amicable solutions in moving this district forward because that's what it's all about. We're all here for one thing, we're here for students, and I think that's the most important piece. The collaborative model that hopefully I brought in has worked and hopefully will continue because that's what it's all about. There is no me in a school system, there is no I. It's always a we, and it's, and the administrative team here is strong, and they'll continue to be strong under Carolyn's leadership. And I'm looking forward to, as a parent, to watching my daughter finish through and watching perhaps grandchildren down the road follow through the school system. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve as the school superintendent here in Middleborough. It was a very proud moment, and thank you.
Thank you, my friend. And with that, Chair entertained a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you, Brian.
Thank you.